All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 26, 2023 regular meeting of the Jersey Village City Council. The time is now 7:01 PM, and I call this meeting to order. Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum of council present?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Next up, we have invocation and pledge of allegiance. We're going to start with prayer by Rose Singleton, followed by pledge of allegiance by Jane and Adeline Mitchum.
Oh my God, they're all standing up. Dear God, at this city council meeting, we need your help. We are here to try and make our city better, but we can't do it alone. Please give us wisdom to make good decisions, help us listen to each other and understand different ideas. We want to work together and do what's fair and right for everyone. There are challenges ahead, but please give us the courage to face them. We want to make our city a welcoming and enjoyable environment for everyone to live, learn, and grow. Show us how to make good choices that will make a difference in the long run. Lord bless our city. Help us to be a place where everyone feels loved and valued. Let us celebrate our differences and build a strong community together. Thank you for letting us be a part of this important work. We promise to do our best and serve with kindness and respect. Amen.
And I was requested to ask the audience if you could slow your pace for the pledge of allegiance, because it is going to be delivered alongside the normal pledge of allegiance in American Sign Language.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you so much. Fantastic job, all of you. This now brings us to presentations. I am told that out of the three, we actually only have one of the presentations that will be happening tonight. The other will happen at a later time. And so, we will go to presentation of the Stork Award to Chris, and I'm going to apologize, Ledesma.
Mayor, councilors, citizens of Jersey Village. Rain, Herzargar, Communication Supervisor and I are happy to give this Stork Award tonight to Chris Ledesma. On April 25, 2023, at 10:19 AM, Emergency Communications Specialist Chris Ledesma answered a call that most dispatchers wait their whole career for. Chris answered the 911 call. The caller was a female that was very out of breath and asking for an ambulance right away. Chris sprung into action and initiated a call for service. This was the mother of a patient and said her daughter might be in labor. Upon further questioning, the mother said she was not sure if her daughter was in labor or not. She was complaining of back pain and didn't know for sure if she was even pregnant. When Chris asked if the patient thought she was pregnant, the mother asked the patient if she knew. The patient said she was pregnant but unsure of how far along she was. The caller estimated maybe six months. When Chris asked if all she felt was just the back pain, the caller stated that the patient could feel the baby coming. Chris asked the caller if she could see any of the baby. The caller checked, and she said couldn't see any part of the baby, but there was a lot of blood. Chris immediately began giving pre-arrival instructions when the mother started yelling, "Don't push." She then said that the baby was coming and was begging for us to hurry. She then started asking Chris what to do next. Chris used her calming techniques of persistent repetitiveness to attempt to calm the caller and give instructions of what needed to be done next. The caller was able to focus and start following the instructions given by Chris. Throughout the whole call, Chris kept giving words of encouragement to the caller. Chris talked her through cleaning the baby's nose and mouth, where to position the baby in relation to the mother, and to keep both the baby and mom warm. Chris continued with instructions of tying the cord. The caller then started to calm everyone in the apartment by giving instructions to others and get them focused. The caller was able to get the cord tied with Chris's instruction. She was also able to get the door open for the medics for when they arrived. Chris started to give instructions on delivering the afterbirth when she was told that the medics were there with her. Chris let the caller go since the medics had arrived. Baby girl was born at 10:23. Both baby and mama were doing great and were transported to the hospital. A dispatcher can go their entire career without ever having a call like this. We are so proud of how Chris handled this call. Tonight, Chris is receiving a commendation and a Stork Award. Mayor, councilors, and citizens, we present to you this evening Emergency Communications Specialist Chris Ledesma. She's now going to pin on the Stork Award.
Oh no, I could say I checked with Rob. The last time we had a baby born by dispatch, or actually by dispatch or EMS, was 20 years ago.
Doesn't happen often.
Way to go, Chris.
Thank you.
Wow, 20 years ago, so that's a... We weren't kidding about that being a rare event. Congratulations again. That brings us to citizens' comments. Citizens who have signed a card and wish to speak to the city council will be heard at this time. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda, the city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject and may respond only with statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments to the city council. The first comment card I have is from Bruce Bowden.
Evening, folks. Bruce Bowden on Lewis Street. Last council session time, I asked for information about conflict of interest of all the committee members and what the legal guys had done to do that. I have not heard anything about it. I would like to get a response back on that. In particular, I think every member of every committee should be not only told what they are expected on conflict of interest, but they also need to sign an affidavit that they don't have it, or whatever the case is. We need to make sure that we're all on the up and up. Okay, that's number one. Only got four for you tonight, okay. Two, your town hall meeting. I've started thinking about something you said. And with the average loss of $250,000 per year for that course, at current rate, you are subsidizing basically $6 and some odd cents, 43 cents, I think is the number, of everybody that plays there. So you think it's okay to subsidize the people outside Jersey Village's golf outing? Okay, that's my point I've been trying to get you. If you're okay with losing that much money on a yearly basis, you are primarily subsidizing non-Jersey Village residents. Now, if all the councils are okay with that, then speak up and say so. But raising it, if they get to $50,000 and they raise it $5, it's a break even and no one's subsidizing anything. And that's the point that I've been trying to get through to you guys all along, since December of last year. All right. The third thing I got for you is on the 8th of this month, they had easy internet boring holes for their cable, whatever it is, fiber optics. They cut the cable at the house. They cut the cable at several places. But I called the city manager and got a lot of platitudes about, "Oh, we can't do this because the state has these rules." The fact of the matter is, they pull a permit. When they mess up, you're required, or should be required, to investigate. Not only did they cut mine, but they cut several in Jersey Village. And they cut the primary one over on Carlsbad, by the way. So everybody connected south of that is out. I don't know when it's going to come back. It's been 18 days for me. And I find it... Well, I know that you said the same thing to other people because it got on that Facebook doodad that my wife reads. So the fact that you ignored it and let it go through, and other people suffered, I think is very... Well, had you done your job and drawn attention to their problem, we might not have had so much downtime. Yeah, I would have been down, but they could have fixed that in three days, or five days, something like that. But they didn't. And a lot of people, I mean, they blew up Winchester country with cutting the thing. That's how bad they are. All right, and the final one, Tahoe and the sewer bypass. What's the deal with this? This thing's been going on forever, but yet no one talks about it. You've got pumps out there that are pumping sewage around all time. It's been going on for how many months? I went before the election. I went by and a guy told me, "Oh yeah, it's been here for six weeks or better." So what's going on?
Sewer line's being replaced.
It's being replaced?
It's being replaced. It takes some time.
Well, I know, but you've been pumping it for over...
We were replacing the line that entire time.
Yeah, okay, all right. That's it for me.
All right, thank you, Bruce. The next card I have is from Eric Anau.
Eric Anau, 15601 Singapore Lane. Good evening, Bobby Mayor, Mayor Bobby and City Council. Few comments. One is not really anything that's on the agenda, but has been come up. And I was part of the town hall asked, the annexation that is possibly pending for the area south of 290. I just want to put this idea down that the addition of that area should be thought of long-term in the idea of 50 to 75 years out, not the next five to 10. While I know there was an estimation of like, I think it was like 7 million or so for the cost of some infrastructure that would need to be built out for water, which is a staggering amount and scary amount, especially for many people in this neighborhood who shutter at any expenditure of funds. But to think that in 75 years, what might happen on the south side of 290 for the benefit of this community is positive and should be taken in consideration. I am for the annexation and moving forward with that. I know that's still in the early phase, but I do like to let myself be known to you guys directly. Cassette Agenda F5 about the speed limit on the freeway. I'm in favor of keeping it at 45 miles an hour. I think 55 is too fast, especially with the businesses entering and exiting and the 529 light that's there. I mean, our police do a great job, but I don't want them really handling speeding tickets rather than focusing on more important things. I know on the regular agenda, G1 bonds, discussion of bonds is going to be possibly coming up, and that's oh so much fun, especially for the pool, park, street, and sewer improvements. I understand the need. I will probably vote for the bonds. I believe that the infrastructure stuff that is considered being, going to be put for those is important and vital to the continuing development of our small city here. Seeing things such as these young ladies up here giving the pledge and giving the prayer make me feel really positive about our neighborhood. Seeing the youth here despite a lot of the other things, but seeing the participation of the youth, whether it's in the pool, whether it's in the high school parades, coming up in here as a community service, is heartening despite all the stuff that's going in society today. JV is a bright light in that. Looking forward to possibly seeing you guys on the July 14 budget meeting. I don't know if I'll be there at 8 AM, but I know my wife will be. And then also looking forward to seeing the upcoming pool renderings. I know that's a future topic, but I am looking forward to whatever happens with that. I'm in support. I don't swim there every day, but we do get a permit to go pass over there. Definitely support the pool. Saturday Avenue, thank you very much for the upcoming 4th of July fireworks. Looking forward to those activities, park board, and then also, everyone, please stay cool. It is awfully hot outside. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. The next card I have is from Jim Fields.
Mayor and City Council, thank you for allowing me to contribute to tonight's meeting. The first thing I would like to request, Mayor, if you could change the rules where citizens can actually ask questions, what's on the agenda. I think it's very constructive because we have a lot of expertise out here that would be advantageous to everyone. Moving on, the city manager's letter has a brewery advertising on it. Does the city pay, you know, is the city receiving revenues for the advertisement? I would just like to know. If not, it shouldn't be there.
Mr. Fields, are you talking about the JV Star?
No, this was the mayor's letter that came out and then talked about the 4th of July thing.
I was simply acknowledging the fact they sponsored the fireworks display.
Okay, so they're... Okay, so they don't pay anything for that advertisement, right?
They paid for the fireworks.
Okay, okay, so that's part of the deal. Okay, thank you for clarifying. I appreciate that. The other one is junk cars. When I ran for office, many areas had cars, I mean, some were parked right in the road. They're still there. And I'm surprised I brought it to you, Mayor, and I brought it to everyone in our city council here. I bought it to the city managers. He tells me to get the app, which I didn't understand, because I requested him to please hop in the car, because I said, "They're still out there." He's continually asking me to go look at the car. No, I'm not going to do that. He gets paid 250K a year. I'm asking him, yeah, 206, add the, yes, you can, add the health benefits and anything else into it. Anyway, aside from that point, I asked him, I said, "Hey, can you hop in the car?" Because he told me, he said, "The code enforcement goes around all the streets." And I said, "Please hop in the car with her and go check, and we'll compare notes." Did I get an answer? No, so I don't understand that. Then on the pool, we have a problem with the pool. And it turns into a blame game. I'm not here to blame anybody. I'm trying to make it better for everybody and safe for everybody and have a pleasant pool experience. But when you have the strills and slide, push back a foot away from the edge, and somebody brings it to their attention, as you're supposed to in the lifeguard management handbook, they get angry. And they push, and the first lifeguard goes, "Hey, when you fix that, what should I do about it?" And this is all information I'd already had emailed you guys, but I want everybody to know this. Then he said, "They're not supposed to be using it." There was nothing in front of the slide to tell the children not to use it, and the children were starting to get on the slide, slide down it. Then finally, one of the guards gets angry, pushes this thing 20 feet back, turns to the people and go, "Is this good enough for you?" And I'm hoping the city manager, and I ask him, "Can you do a report for me on the problems we had elicited?" Never got back with me, nor anybody on city council. And I think it's a serious issue, and I hope you'll look into it. One last thing, Mayor. Anytime you do bring up any issues at the pool on the safety, you know what happens? They become belligerent, rude, inconsiderate. That doesn't benefit anybody. And I hope, Mayor, that you would look into that part of it, the behavior, and that you can take care of that. Thank you very much.
Jim, just one real quick question. On the junk cars, have you provided the addresses of where those junk cars are located to the city?
No, you can.
All right, thank you, sir. The next card I have is from Rick Faircloth.
Good evening. I'm Rick Faircloth, 1601 Lakeview. On several occasions, I've come before council and talked about the over 65 exemption. I know you have an item on the agenda tonight. With the backup information, and I've sent, I've been there a couple of times. I've sent emails to you folks. And with your backup information that's been provided from Austin, even many of the other cities that they used in this evaluation for the over 65 exemption are higher than what we are, and they have 20 to 40 cents lower tax rates. And so, as I had said in one of my earlier, a $10,000 increase of $37 change is nothing. It's almost like a slap in the face. So I think you folks need to really consider, one of my proposals is that this should be $50,000 rather than a $10,000 for the over 65 exemption. And just think real serious about that. I know that the state's working on a couple of issues, but those aren't going to happen until 2024 and 2025. And we really need to get some stuff going now. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Rick. The next comment card I have is from Patricia Ray.
I have two, Patricia Ray, and I live in Wyndham Lake, which is the small, farthest east neighborhood in Jersey Village. I have two concerns and comments. And one is about the benches around our retention pond near the golf course. I believe it's a tremendous waste of tax dollars. There are at least 33 benches that the city just put out. And there were also at least six that the Jersey Village Women's Club had already put out there. So some of them are about 15 feet apart only. If you cannot walk 15 feet, you're not going to be around the lake walking. I know that much. And so, I'm just curious, number one, why so many are out there? Who sold this many to the city, if they did sell them, and at what cost to the city? And I'm also wondering why Wyndham Lake of Jersey Village, we have a lake also, and we got zero. And I know other neighborhoods got zero in Jersey Village. That's my number one concern tonight. And my number two is also piggybacking on to the Easy Fiber comments earlier. I am hoping that the city can show some concern about all of the problems that Easy Fiber has caused, maybe collecting data, having a survey from the citizens, having a hotline or something. My personal cable was cut. I know other people have been out of electricity, natural gas, and cable, not all at the same time. But I think the citizens would benefit if the city were to call Easy Fiber. Things might happen a little faster. I know Austin called when I called him directly. But I think the city would get things done faster with Easy Fiber instead of just citizens. I was put on hold. I was put to two or three different people that I spoke with. And I think the city needs to be a little bit responsible in this and to also show our citizens that the city council cares. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. So first, on Easy Fiber, I just want to make sure that everyone knows. I think most people are aware of this by now. It's been... knows, I think most people are aware of this by now. It's been publicized pretty significantly over the last couple of days. Their permit was pulled as a result of the, of the issues that residents experienced with breakages of internet and other infrastructure. There was a meeting this morning with representatives from EZ Fiber, Center Point, and EZ Fiber subcontractors. They are developing a plan in order to try to avoid this issue in the future, and they have been told, great, as soon as you present that plan, then we'll look at restoring your permit, and until then, it will not be restored. So just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that yes, the city has been communicating with, even before that, has been communicating with them. So it's not simply us relying upon citizens. We've been in communication with them throughout this entire process regularly. As to the benches, we are always open to suggestions as to places where benches could be relocated. If someone feels like there is a city park where they could use a bench, certainly we're open to receiving that feedback. But just keep in mind, these are all placed at city parks. If you're talking about HOA-owned land, you know, such as the lake, the lakes of Wyndham, it wouldn't, that wouldn't be a location where we would put it because it's private property. So that would, that would be left to the HOA to decide if they wanted to put a bench there or not. So just so you're aware of kind of at least the reason why there may be some areas where the benches are not located. So, let's see, the last comment card I have is from Kimberly Anau.
My name is Kimberly Anau, and I live at 15601 Singapore Lane. As my 21st installment on Jersey Village, 1993 was very busy with changes for both active and, both active and proposed that really got the citizens' attention during regular and special city council meetings. This year was not as scary as the debut of Jurassic Park, though some villagers may have felt like it was really Groundhog Day. It wasn't so bad as we would not have appeared in an episode of Homicide Life on the Street, nor the X-Files. But the small-town reverence could be heard in "I Will Always Love You" by Whitney Houston and "Can't Help Falling in Love" by UB40. On the January 18th city council meeting, a representative advised they would pay all costs of the bridge on Rio Grande and will pay the impact fees when permits were issued upon closing in three weeks for the Wyndham Village land. February 15th, approval of the plating for blocks 10 and 11 along Village Drive for a total of 11 homes initially called Golf View Garden Homes. March unanimous votes to amend ordinances 93-01 to include a non-binding referendum to construct a new police building and a possibility to connect to the city of Houston water lines in lieu of repairing damaged wells or drilling new wells. In April, volunteers were featured in the April 18th Houston Post as awarded for the Carol Fox Park Community Built Playground. Fire Chief Kathy Hutchins described the beyond-the-call-of-duty situation of Officer Sandra Riggs and Reserve Officer Patrick Captain Hopman was noticed, who noticed smoke coming from a house and reported to dispatch. Officer Riggs then entered the house to check for occupants while using an extinguisher to put out the fire. Due to the heavy smoke and inhaling extinguisher chemicals, she and Hopman were transported to the hospital for treatment and released. In May, Mayor Descant presented a plaque to the members of the Playground Committee for their long process of hard work since January 1991 for fundraising and planning for Carol Fox Park. The Police Department requested $20,000 in unallocated funding for six video cameras and 29 bulletproof vests, but was denied as there were no funds available in the current budget. However, there was consensus of council for a full-time donated canine and appointed officer for the night shift, as well as being used for drug interdiction, locate lost or wanted individuals, and to promote the city and police department through public appearances. The resident and owner of the dog, John Hart, advised the dog is very qualified and can search much better than 25 police officers. In June, there was consideration of a new program called the Special Traffic Enforcement Program, STEP, which gives more visibility for safety, traffic control, with officers earning overtime pay while giving up warrant collections work to Texas Municipal Services. But on June 21st, the STEP program was modified as it was not eligible for grant funding to internal funding for more traffic enforcement hours, which would include patrolling within the residential areas. July 19th was the expansion of West Gulf Bank being extended into Jersey Village, and was in the newspaper, which upset a resident citing traffic problems and crime would increase. Since there had not been much planning activity in recent years, many residents were not aware of this road extension, and though it could increase the retail tax base instead of a tax increase to homeowners, it was another access point into the residential area. The fire department had an opportunity to buy a used EKG monitor defibrillator from Cypress Creek EMS, which had a bid of $5,500. So council approved $5,600 as this model would work with the current equipment and was in very good condition. The Texas Commission on Fire Protection sent a very complimentary report to the city manager, Del Brown, for their recent key rate inspection of the city, noting many improvements made to the waterwork system and the fire department. In August, an open public hearing was called to discuss the West Gulf Bank road expansion, as unfortunately, Jersey Village was part of the second contract that was still planned for building out. There's just a lot more that happened in 1993, so, but otherwise, looking forward to 4th of July.
Appreciate it. Okay, that is all of our public comment cards. That brings us to the city manager's report. Austin Bleece?
I'm sorry, wait, we have to, the cards have to be turned in before the meeting starts. But, oh, I'm sorry, this, Mr., no, I think, sorry, that's a different person. Sorry. Got you confused with someone else. That brings us to the city manager's report. Austin Bleece?
Mayor and councilors, the reports before you. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have, but I know Robert would like to throw in a couple of comments on the benches.
All right.
Yes, hi. So I just wanted to comment on that. One of the highest priorities in the Parks Master Plan was improved site amenities and seating around, at our parks. So that explains the benches. They're 100% recycled material. They're actually very affordable. Since we place them at the parks, we have had two HOAs reach out and request to purchase benches for their, their neighborhoods. So we started that. In addition, we also can do like a memorial bench or something, something to unify our city to make sure it belongs. So we don't have like a smorgasbord of benches. So yes, Wyndham Village has reached out and Park Place has reached out to talk about benches. And then also just to share with that, these benches, we can relocate them for larger events. If we ever, like for July 4th, you'll see some of these be relocated. Not all of them. The goal was to keep our parks intact for July 4th. So some of them will be moved.
Great. That's good information. And I will say, I've, I've received, I guess they made their debut at Founder's Day, and I've heard, I think 95% of the comments I've received about them has been overwhelmingly positive. So it's, people really enjoy them. Any, any other questions regarding that or any, any other aspect of the city manager's report?
Just real quick, Robert, what's the expected lifetime of one of those benches?
Being recyclable plastic, if there's any type of issues, you can kind of melt them down and repair them. They could stretch 10 years.
Okay. If there are no other questions, we will move on to the consent agenda. Does any member of council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for consideration during the regular agenda? None, huh? Okay. In that case, I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda at this time.
A motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The consent agenda passes unanimously. That brings us to the regular agenda. Item G1, discuss and take appropriate action concerning a potential bond election in November of 2023 for water and sewer improvements, street improvements, a new pool and bathhouse and park improvements. Robert Basford, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This agenda item is to discuss the potential bond election. In the May council meeting, council directed city staff to begin working with our financial advisory team, as well as any consultants pertaining to the potential of conducting a bond election. So I included in this memo, it's kind of lengthy, so bear with me, including this memo is information on each potential proposition, as well as the information we have established since that last meeting. So I'll just go over it in order to have it listed. With the pool and bathhouse, we were instructed to establish renderings with a 6, a 10, and a $15 million pool, and what that would bring to the residents of Jersey Village. Since May, we've engaged Progressive Commercial Aquatics to begin with the design portion of the design build pool concept. It was established that based on our footprint, the most logical pool budgets would be 6, 8, and 11 million. 15 would probably not fit. And so we began working in with those refinements. We've been gathering a current inventory of our pools, stakeholders, some comparison pools, and identifying some needs for the community. The reservation plan will consist of a mock-up of a few different pool types containing three levels of amenities that residents can view and provide input on, as well as the size of body of water. We're currently in the estimation and sizing phase of the project, and we plan to have visuals at the pool in July. Since writing this, we, we do have the black line drawings, as they call them, and we plan to get a survey out this week and then have them at the pool this weekend. And then at the event, I'll be there to take input. Given the large number of people that may have input on this, we're going to go with a QR code survey rather than the sticker method because when you have a large turnout, the stickers will dominate the board. Our pool concepts will contain an eight-lap pool, a leisure pool, a new bathhouse, a new pump house, some amenities for the community to consider and choose from would be water slides, splash pad play structures, a heater, sport amenities such as a volleyball net or basketball hoop. The deck would have incorporated shade and seating throughout. And the community could also consider adding rental areas within the pool, such as pavilion seating, nooks, or something along those lines. The goal is to get feedback on the preference from the community regarding each of these categories. So once we get that, we'll take that back to Progressive and begin working on final estimates for that. In terms of park improvements, staff engaged with Berdick Consultants in 2019 to finalize a Parks Master Plan. A handful of those projects were placed at Clark Henry Park and placed in the high priority category. So we began working with them to kind of refine that and zero in on Clark Henry Park. It was discussed during the council meeting that we can consider combining those projects, all the popular projects, into one park improvement. Staff confirmed the project list with the advisory committee during the June 7th meeting, hopefully to present an updated park plan at the July 4th event. Since writing this, once again, we do have that conceptual plan, and we will have those boards at the pool as well this weekend, as well as July 4th. The potential projects include a multipurpose field, a baseball field, a T-ball field, park lighting, an upgraded pavilion, upgraded concession stand, and maintenance shop, park pathways, an updated park sign, workout trail stations, the consideration of an additional play structure, proper drainage and irrigation, and potentially escape park if feasible. Initial rough estimates for this park improvement scope are at 6 to 8 million. Of course, the estimates would be refined as Berdick finalizes schematics and comparisons. Moving on to street improvements, our CIP has been updated with more accurate numbers as costs have risen since last year. Our next streets would include Congo, Singapore, Australia, Solomon, and Seattle, with an estimate of roughly 15.5 million, factoring in inflation. This estimate factors in water and sewer upgrades as well, making these streets full rehab. In addition, the Ecuador Pressurant Bridge could also be included, bringing the total estimation to 18 million. Council may want to consider a full traffic bridge in Ecuador to alleviate school traffic congestion throughout the neighborhood, rather than just doing a pedestrian bridge, if that's something we want to consider as well. Moving on to water and sewer improvements, staff has identified the linear footage of our sanitary lines and accompanied their install date. Estimates for the rehab of sanitary lines, such as, such as the one in Tahoe, using a combination of pipe bursting and CIPP methods, price the renovation at roughly 57.14 per linear foot, and staff would recommend replacing the pipes that are near or older than 40 years old. My apologies as a typo, but this represents roughly 62,264 linear foot, not 62 million, sorry, with a total estimate of $3.7 million. The remaining 120,000 linear feet can be added to like an infrastructure replacement plan to allow staff proactively allocate funds for the replacement by the time they're due. This would equate to budgeting roughly 325,000 annually to ensure on-time replacement when each line is due. I need an auto push. The Red Oak Bayou Joint Powers Board manages one of our main wastewater treatment plants, which needs a full rehab, and our portion of that rehab would be $6 million. The water and sewer additions to the ETJ are also estimated roughly $6.15 million. So there's all the propositions, and here's some of the updates from the financial advisory team. The finance advisory team has initially reported that the bond for all the above would include four or five propositions. Proposition for water and sewer improvements, proposition for streets and roads, proposition for the pool slash bathhouse and park improvements, although it may have to be separate, and possibly an additional proposition for the bridge. The advisory team is going to check with the Attorney General to determine if the bridge can be included in the roads proposition and if the pool can be included in the park proposition. The total value of all the improvements, including an $8 million pool and a $6 million park improvements, which is the low end of both, comes to a total of 48, 47.8 million dollars. And the total value, including an $11 million pool and an $8 million park improvements, which is the high end of both of those, comes at $52.8 million. And below, we have the tax rate impacts presented for both scenarios. If you go with the low-end pool and the low-end park, you're looking at 9.5 cent increase. And if you go on the high end of both, you would get a 10.5 cent increase. This will result in the following estimated tax rates for the next five years, taking into consideration the current debt service and if the rate stays at 74 cents. The blow table after that takes into consideration and illustrates the delta of what your taxes could look like with the 10.5 cent. It's also important to note that these improvements would affect operating budgets in the parks and recreation divisions to factor in additional pool hours, lifeguard staff, pool chemicals, park maintenance, park light utilities, and et cetera. We're not able to calculate good cost estimates, but we do know there would be an impact. Right now, if you were to go with the largest pool option, you're looking at an upgrade from three guards on stand to seven, and six guards in the house to 12. And you're looking at potentially doubling your chemicals. If council was to call, if the council was to call a bond election for the project, this would happen no later than August 21st. As we narrow down the scope and get feedback from council and residents, we will need direction from council in July as to which projects to include or not include for a bond. We will need to get final recommendations from council to the financial advisors by August 1st for them to have everything ready for council to vote on. For tonight, we do not need any formal action from the council.
Okay. Thank you, Robert. Discussion amongst council.
I was surprised on some of this, not. One of the things that I feel about the bond proposal is these, I've been very against doing a bond. And we've come to a road where we're going to have to do that for street, sewer, and the pool is going to have to be replaced. I don't think, my initial look at this is that I don't think it's appropriate to add almost all of these park, park improvements. They should come out of the budget as they normally would. And I don't want to add a bunch of wants into this when we have quite a large expensive streets, wastewater, and the pool that are absolute necessities that have to happen. One of the questions I had with the wastewater is these were installed in the 50s, 70s, 80s, 90s. There was significant maintenance upgrade that was done to some of those lines, I'd say in 2012, 2014. Is, are those still coming, coming to the Is... Are those still coming to the end of their life? When... How does that factor in?
Typically, if you were to do like a rehab or such, you would start the lifespan of that section over. You typically want to get, as new technology comes out, the lifespan gets beyond 40, 40 years. But most of our infrastructure that we've factored into this is the old infrastructure that is reaching the end of its lifespan.
We've passed the end. Ecuador, Crawford, we've passed the end.
Robert, just as a clarification, I was kind of going back and forth through the memo, and I may have missed it. But the calculations for the tax impact, what is the... How long do the bonds... How long... What's the term of the bonds that's being used to calculate these numbers?
Those are 30-year bonds.
30?
We are unable, there was a federal law passed a few years ago that you can't refinance those until at least 10 years in. So these are 30-year bonds.
Okay.
I will just talk a little bit about... So Robert gave us some renderings of some hypothetical pools for all of these different price points to the Parks and Rec Department. We decided last meeting that they would be the committee. And I think everybody was pretty much on board, not that they get the sole decision, but when you look at the layout and the use, and what we were going to move towards and what we would benefit, a lot of people went with that mid-tier pool. And it was also brought up, although we are going to have a city hall about, or a town hall about the pool, that it would be held at the pool, so people could be looking at the specific renderings while they're in it. And then I also calculated for the average house, like 350 value, this would be an impact if we went for the 10.5 cents. An impact per month of about $25 a month per household. And on the bigger range, like a 600K house is 45, and a 250 is about $15. And I think to the average person, that's kind of what they want to know, like, what is this going to impact me every month? How is this going to really, like, you know, it's a lot of numbers. So I like to always look at it like that. What is my monthly jump? And that was a big question for Parks and Rec. That was one of our big questions, is what does this impact me every month? So that was helpful, and I appreciate the time and effort Robert put in that.
I'll make a... Closer to me. I'll make a comment. First off, I will say, I do think, you know, when it comes to roads, sewers, sewer infrastructure, to me, that's not really even... Those aren't negotiables. Those are must-do. I personally feel the same way about the pool. I'm a big fan of the pool. I'm a big fan of the amenities that the pool allows. And even, I'm not a... Going on record saying this, I'm not a huge fan of swim team, but one of my kids is, so there's also that. However, as far as the parks plan, I think it's important. Like you're saying, what James made the comment on about doing stuff that is necess... You know, put your needs before your wants. But I also think it's important to make sure that you're not cutting off your nose despite your face, so that when you're making these plans, if we have the long-term plan, it doesn't mean we need to do everything at once, but I do think there's things that need to be done when it's... When it makes more sense to. For instance, the drainage, and things like, you know, the proper grading and looking at the future. I think if there's a way to look at doing some of that with maybe holding off on some of the really, really big stuff, like the... Just to throw something out there, like this skate park, or, you know, something along, like, something that's really big like that. I think that it's important to still try to pre-plan for that stuff, maybe, without going ahead and pulling the trigger on stuff that could possibly be something that we could budget for in a different manner. So, but I do think it's too early to really decide anything without seeing every single thing down on paper with numbers and pictures. I'm big on pictures, 3D ones.
With regard to numbers, and just kind of some process questions. Obviously, a bond, if we go through this and decide to raise the effort, that would be on the November ballot. We're looking at a increase of taxes suggested by 10 cents. Would that trigger a citizen approval as well?
So, that would be, I mean, the citizens would approve it at the ballot for the bonds. So they would vote on it knowing the tax rate implications for that debt service.
Okay. I was just, I know that the state has the law that requires that, so.
We're not entirely positive at the moment. The financial advisor is still working on how many propositions it would have to be. Parks would have to be separate from roads, but we don't know exactly how many propositions. It could be six, it could be four. They're still looking at all that and trying to get guidance from the AG on that.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I know with water and sewer, that is... That falls under our utilities fund. Does... I'm a little interested to hear more about how that plays into the bond, because it's... Bond's kind of being used to describe all of this. Is this all truly a bond, like, secured by property taxes? Or is part of this thinking that it would be revenue bonds versus conventional bonds?
Yeah, part of it, the water and sewer pieces of it specific would be revenue. It would be roughly a million dollars a year on the water and sewer fund for those bonds. But that, those portions would be about a little over 12 million, I believe, for the water and sewer portion that would be on that.
So would those be... Would, to that point, would the revenue bonds not be included in the calculation of the tax rate change?
Correct. So the tax rate here already considers the revenue from the water, wastewater. So that, this would be that, that 10 and a half cents would be the impact on the property taxes.
Okay, so these tax impacts only take into account the general fund portion of these calculations?
Correct.
Do we have an estimate as to what impact this might have to... Are we going to have to increase water and sewer rates in order to accommodate the bonds?
We're going to have to increase water and sewer rates no matter what. And we're looking at a 10 to 20% increase, similar to what we've seen around us. But with a 20% increase coming up, you know, for this next fiscal year, and future years being an average of 10% increase, it would cover the bond costs along with future things.
Yeah, please.
Okay. Back in streets, 2007, we had a bond for streets. And what we did is we included water and sewer within the revenue, within the funds, pay by property taxes. And then what we did is the utility fund pays part of the debt service payment to the debt service in order for that to be cheaper than revenue bonds. Because revenue bonds would have been more expensive, the interest would have been more expensive. So that's what they did back then. I don't know his plans right now, but that's what they did back in 2007.
Okay, so the cost of, in other words, you can get a better rate by using bonds that are secured by property taxes?
Yeah, by using property taxes, we got a better rate, so that's how we did it. We included everything into the property taxes. And then the utility fund paid the debt service. Part of the, that's why you see the transfers from utility fund to debt service. It's part of the street bonds of 2007.
Okay, so it wouldn't change the calculation here because you have contributions from the utility fund paying for that portion of the...
Yes, that's right.
Paying more is always hard. It stinks. And I know we're trying to go through some economic development opportunities that would help raise sales tax and eventually mitigate some of the effects on property taxes and raising. I think bonds versus... I don't like debt either, but the cost of infrastructure going up three and a half times, not three and a half percent, but three and a half X over the past four years is causing a lot of that. We also have to keep in mind that we're making not even a 10 or 20 years decision. These are 40, 50-year decisions, and hopefully, the councils and city government that follow us will do a little better maintenance than maybe we did before. But as Missay now pointed out, there wasn't a whole lot of room in the budgets for a lot of that stuff either. So as we go through this, we're going to have to... It's time to pay for that in the past, but I'm glad that we've built up a lot of our infrastru... A lot of our financial infrastructure to be able to do some of this.
So, the... And I think the key here is, I think you bring up a good point about this being a 40 to 50-year impact. And I think in those situations, it makes more sense to look at bonds because you are talking about the people who are, you know, using them. I mean, the sewage lines that we install are probably going to outlive me, more than likely. And I think it makes sense that you have those paid for by the people who are going to get the majority of the use of them. We have tried to hold as closely as we can to a pay-as-you-go system, which hypothetically is feasible when inflation stays around 2%. When it climbs up to 5, 6, 7, 8%, very quickly, your pay-as-you-go system gets thrown out of whack. And so, it, you know, in this situation, it is definitely incumbent upon us to look at trying to get this stuff financed as we go. Rates are a little high right now, but I will say, a good thing is municipal bonds still seem to be doing pretty decent. They're not, they're not at the same percentage rates as your ordinary financing that's out there. And as Austin mentioned earlier, after 10 years, we do have the option to refinance. So there is a possibility as well that in 10 years, if rates are down, you know, a little bit, that there could be an opportunity for some savings. The one thing we'll ultimately find out is, you know, there are a lot of people who have said, you know, "I remember a time when citizens approved projects." Well, you have it. This is a situation where citizens are going to have their say. And I'm also actually glad that they're broken out, or they will be broken out, into at least related groupings, so that if citizens decide that they're okay with roads and sewer lines, which I would hope all of us are, I think we all use them, then, and if they decide they're not okay with what we're proposing regarding parks, well, then, they will have the ability to voice that as well. But at the same time, if they do approve them, well, then, at least then, we know how the citizens feel about each of those discrete subject matters, so. Any further discussion, or is there any feedback that staff was specifically looking for beyond what we've discussed already?
I just had one more comment. Also, we're in a unique position with just the age of our city. Our streets are 50 years old, the pool is about that. And all of these projects seem to be happening at the same time, just from the nature of the age of our city. So we're in kind of a unique position where all of these very big projects are kind of relatively in the same timeline, just based on that alone. And so I think our formal councils of yesteryears probably couldn't have anticipated how we'd grow and it'd be all at once. And so I do think the pay-as-you-go system could still continue to work. It's just we're kind of at an interesting with the sewer and street and pool and all of these things being the same, kept out age.
That's a very good point. And also, one other thing I meant to bring up. I noticed that, and I assume this is due to the retirement of our existing debt, I noticed going from fiscal year '27 to fiscal year '28, the tax rate drops again. Is that what that is, is the retirement of the existing debt? Okay. So, I mean, the good thing is that because we have not, we've been very hesitant to take on debt in the past, you kind of almost get to the point where the tax rate comes back very close to what it is now, just within a couple of years. So that's encouraging. It means we're not talking about a long-term... It's not a, it's not a huge burden, or at least it's not an unquestionable burden, but it also is not a long-term one. It brings us pretty close to where we are now, which is, that's encouraging. Any further discussion from council on this? Obviously, we've got a little ways to go. This doesn't have to be, this isn't something that we're going to approve for the ballot, probably until, I'm sure there'll be a lot more discussion next month as we get into the budget cycle. But obviously, we're probably not making any final decisions on this until August. So there will be plenty of time for citizens to continue to ask questions and to get more information before we even decide how we're going to approach this from a putting it on the ballot perspective. Okay, so there's no action to be taken on this, so if everyone is good, we're going to move on to the next item. So that brings us to item G2. Consider ordinance number 2023-15, modifying the over-65 exemption for the City of Jersey Village, amending the Code of Ordinances for the City of Jersey Village, Chapter 62 taxation by amending Article 1 in general, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date. Austin Bleese, City Manager.
Mayor and councilors, during the budget retreat back in May, the council discussed some options. In looking at the possible increases in increments of $5,000, the city would see a reduction in revenue of about $33,000 per $5,000 of increased exemption. That equates to approximately $37 in savings for the average over-65 homeowner. Given the increase in cost for this upcoming fiscal year, adding more firefighters and the other major projects we have coming up as well, the council must weigh the full needs of the community as well. The council should also consider other cities in Harris County, what they're doing. Other cities in the county that offer an over-65 exemption at $100,000, like Jersey Village just today, or higher, are Morgan's Point, Bel Air, Southside Place, West University Place, Uble, Houston, and Katy. Out of the more than 700 taxing units in Harris County, only 33 offer an over-65 exemption of $100,000 or more. If the council does not want to, if the council does adjust the over-65 exemption, an average person receiving the exemption will be taxed at 53% of their property tax value for the upcoming year. Currently, they're taxed at 50% of their valuation. If council wanted to keep it at 50% of valuation, that exemption would need to be increased by $10,000. While the policy change has its merits, there are certainly some considerations that the council must give to it in light of everything else. On the next page, we also have information as to the other communities that have the over-65 exemption, what they have for the homestead exemption, and the disabled as well, and their tax rates. And on the page after that, it shows what the homestead, or what the property taxes would look like for somebody with over-65 exemption and the homestead exemption as well. We do need to notify HCAD of any changes by June 30th, so they can get their information out accordingly. So it is imperative that if the council wants to make any changes, they would need to do that tonight.
Okay, thank you, Austin. Discussion amongst council on this ordinance.
So I did a quick calculation, looking up the CPI of what it was as close to two years ago as today, and what the, how that tracks. So June of '21 to June of '23. And that's, '21, June of '21 is when we increased the exemption to $100,000. I think it went up from 50 to 100?
Well, it went from 50 to 75, then 75 to 100,000. So in the course of, what was that, 2019 that we increased? So from 2019 to now, we doubled the over-65 exemption.
Okay. And, you know, to me, other cities, what others, we are our own city, so I'm not sure that that factors in, in my view. The whole CPI has gone up 13% from that. And it's probably going to only, if you, year-over-year, next month, it might be 12 points something. But the point, all four points that are listed in the council notes, right, about aging in place and keeping this a great place and keeping things affordable, doesn't keep pace with home values, but that is out of our control as a member here. But I would like to see something close to that increase of 10 to 13%. And if we can keep that on a steady pace to keep up with CPI year-over-year, that would be beneficial, I think, to our aging population.
I recall the conversation we had last year was that we intended to keep at the CPI and set some sort of standard. And there was a lot of reasons that we chose that. And so I would support if it's 13% to go with 13%.
Any other thoughts from council on this? I will say this. I appreciate the thinking when people say, "Well, Harris County offers this," or "Houston offers this." And I, it's natural that you want to compare. I mean, obviously, in the memo, at the memo we're looking at, we are comparing with other cities. One of the things... One of the things, and this is the thing you quickly learn when you start having to bound, you know, create a budget and fund it with the various forms of revenue that we have available, you quickly discover that these things are much more complex sometimes than you realize. One of the challenges that we have is that, at the end of the day, I think everyone can say that the goal is to create a fair system, as much as we can under the current circumstance. I don't like the property tax system. I think it makes it extremely challenging to tax everyone on a fair basis, but that's really the goal, is to try to find a fair way of being able to divide up how we fund the programs that we have. One of the things I mentioned during our budget session is that, you know, yeah, you can look at a community like Bel Air or West University, and you can say, "Well, their tax rate is only this amount, whereas ours is much higher." Well, and yes, their properties are valued significantly higher, so at the end of the day, I would bet that a lot of these homes have, even though the tax rate's lower, the actual tax bill is probably higher. You know, a patrol, a police patrol vehicle that's driving down the street and patrolling a street in Bel Air doesn't somehow cost significantly more there than it does in Jersey Village, for the most part. A dollar is a dollar, and it pays for a certain amount of police, or a certain amount of fire coverage, or whatever those things are. And so, we, at the end of the day, what you really have to look at are the tax bills. What are you paying, and what are you getting in return for that? The rate and the values and all of that are merely inputs that go into what ends up being the final equation. So I think that's the thing that has to be compared, and people have to ask themselves if they feel like they're getting good value for their money, for the things that they get here compared to, say, Houston, or, God forbid, unincorporated Harris County. And so, I think that's what we have to keep in mind as we're making these decisions.
I moved to approve ordinance 2023-15 for the amount, changing the over-65 homestead exemption to 113,000.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes unanimously. That brings us to mayor and council comments. I'm going to start down at this end with Councilmember McCray.
I want to make a comment about the Fourth of July. I hope everybody comes out, enjoys the parade, enjoys all the cool stuff that's gonna go on. Hopefully, we won't all have heat strokes. But at least it's in the evening-ish. I'm trying here. And something I just think is important, as we look at, as we look at budget, as we look at bond, as we look at exemptions, when we talk about this stuff, I think it's really important for people to remember that it's not just about, like, kind of like what some of the, what other council members have said, it's not just about looking at other places and comparing apples to apples, because Jersey Village is not like a lot of these other places. They're not. You don't get to, you know, you don't call your police or fire department and have a two-minute response time anywhere else, not even in Memorial Villages. It's just not, it doesn't happen. You know, you're not typically able to call and get somebody on the phone when you call your city council, or you call your city city services or city employees. You know, you can't, you don't get that in a lot of places, and we get that here. You know, the fact that EZ Fiber was screwing everything up, and the permit got pulled, I can't imagine how long that would take to get any action in Harris County, or, God forbid, City of Houston. So I just think it's important that we all kind of keep a little perspective when it comes to this stuff, for all of it. So, I'm done.
Councilmember Singleton.
That was well said. July 4th, come to the parade, come to the event. Reminder, fireworks aren't legal in the city. If you go somewhere else outside the city, be careful. Follow warnings, don't mix it with alcohol. Be very, very careful. Stay inside JV during July 4th. The roads are not as safe. Be very careful where you're going. And that's, that's it for me.
Councilmember Wasson.
You meant the roads are not as safe outside of JV, right?
Yeah.
You know, I think as we look at, one, first of all, happy Independence Day, everyone. It's a time for celebration of freedoms and everything. Switching gears back to, we talked about costs, and my taxes are gonna go up if we approve all these bonds. And I'm willing to pay it. Doesn't mean you have to, but I'm affected. Everyone up here is affected by all the decisions we make. We're not exempt, unlike Congress is exempt from their, some of their decisions. We have to live by them, and our neighbors have to, and everyone else. So, my cable was also cut on Wednesday by EZ Fiber. I gave EZ Fiber a break, not because I have allegiance to them, or I like them somehow. I gave them a little slack because my cable was buried two inches below the ground. So, two wrongs don't make a right. They cut it, and it was buried incorrectly in the first place. And that's what we're finding with a lot of these utility issues. But hopefully, we can get them straightened out and going forward on that. But we all are affected. I had a sick kid at home who does what teenagers do online and things like that, and, you know, chatting with his friends and things like that, and I had a young daughter couldn't watch TV because we stream. My point is, is that we all are affected, and I'm grateful we had power and were not affected by the storm. That would have been, yeah. So anyway, a happy Fourth of July.
And Mayor Proton Mitchum.
I will also echo the happy Fourth of July. I'm very excited. Drink lots of water, come out and see the show. And I'm gonna echo what Eric said, JV is a bright light, and I really enjoy being part of this dynamic group up here, making decisions. And every decision we make in itself is one piece of this big giant puzzle, and it's all moving in different places. We take away from here, it affects here. We add over here, it can affect here. So it's a delicate balance, and I think that we definitely consider all angles, and I really do appreciate that. I guess that's all I have to say about happy Fourth of July, everybody. Oh, I did want to mention, Ms. Katie, I don't know her last name, but she created a Facebook group called JV Rocks, and we paint rocks, and we scatter them around the flower beds around JV. We met today and painted a bunch of Fourth of July rocks. So be, when you go on your morning walks with your adorable pups, look for them. And if you haven't joined the Facebook group, go ahead and add it on. It's a really cute community outreach that Ms. Katie just started.
I'm gonna speak for her, just to, so JV Rocks existed. She got with the past people and kind of gave it some new life. But appreciate the credit.
All right. I'm just gonna, happy Fourth of July, everyone. I'm looking forward to seeing y'all at the Fourth of July Parade and the the celebration at Clark Henry Park afterwards. I'll just say, I know it's something that I emphasize often, but I think it's well worth saying again. Yes, it's always great when people come up and they wanna come up and participate in public comment. It's a very good way for people to engage with city council and to be heard. However, I want to encourage anyone who has questions after the fact, because there's really only so much we can do in terms of a back-and-forth, please do reach out to your city council members if you feel like there was a question you had that wasn't answered tonight, or if maybe you just didn't have an opportunity to get up and speak during public comment. All of our email addresses are available through the city website. In addition, I make my my cell phone number publicly known everywhere. If you look at any of my mayor's newsletters, that phone number on there is my personal phone number. It's my personal cell phone number. If you have questions or concerns, feel free to reach out, because I can certainly provide a whole heck of a lot more information to you in a phone call than I can do right here during the middle of a city council meeting. So just encourage people to make full use of those avenues to make yourself heard. So with that, we are going to move into an executive session. City council is now going to retire to a closed session at 8:14 PM pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property, and Section 551.071, Consultations With Attorney in Connection With The Following Item. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property, and Section 551.071, Consultations With Attorney, A Closed Meeting To Deliberate Information From A Business Prospect That The City Seeks To Locate In Jersey Village Ters Number Two, And Economic Development Negotiations Including The Possible Purchase, Exchange, Or Value Of Real Property Related There Too. We will return to open session and continue with the remainder of tonight's agenda after the closed session deliberations are concluded.
...
Okay, the closed session was adjourned at 8:51 PM and no official action or vote was conducted during the closed session. Which brings us to adjournment, meeting adjourned.